This conference will now be recorded.
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, so we are prepared to talk about the upcoming budget. And what I'd like to do is just run you through here, I have some tie points. And as we go through the funds, it's like always if you have any questions, just stop here. Understand something, especially MJ, this is his first time around. So a lot of the details, again, I want to point out really what the big changes are. So you have an understanding. But all in all, this budget before you is balanced. Obviously, we have to balance the budget each year, you know that. But we used numbers from last year. So realistically, this is not a true depiction of what's to come. We have to make some guesses, we have to make some projections. And we'll do that when we finish up this here real quick. Run you through a couple series of what is. So you can see that. But the first page is the summary. You can see all these are all funds. And at the bottom, you can see that if everything goes right, it will be $249,000 to the good. That is not a good place to be. That is cutting it close. And again, when we talk about expenditures, we had some movements this year. I can tell you that the last six months Dana has made a lot of corrections in the guts of the budget, which changed that number. The number you saw, probably seen in the last two, three years were an illusion. And I'm embarrassed to say that. So now we're down to the, we're down to the nickels and dimes. But this is a pretty even snapshot of what, what we are. Let's see, everything goes just right. So the next page is the capital. I won't spend too much time, I will tell you that the capital, we kept a lot of the equipment still in there. We still have to buy, we still have to replace. We have some costly things that are on the table. But all in all, probably my recommendation as I work through this is that we hold off just for a couple of months before spending any capital money. Meaning that we will find things July, August, possibly September, just to see where we are. So we can start on page 128, this is where we start getting into the revenues. And the first one, obviously I'll bring to your attention the form property tax. You can see we're 3.2 billion. What I'm going to be able to point out to you is if this changes. If this changes on property tax, which I did have a talk, I did have a talk with Chad Alexander about his thoughts, what he thinks. And he says, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be tested. What he means by that, because people are going to, they're going to pay a lot more, they're going to sell their homes. Our, it's not going to be able to pay, what's going to happen? Again, we have a lot of work with property tax. So we kept the number flat, no growth, no, nothing. Who knows, we can see a 1%, 2% growth next year, we just don't know. If you slide down to franchise tax, where it says electrical. See where last budget goes $884,000. Slide to the far right, now it's $1,075,000. That's one of the things I want to point out, that was one of the corrections that we called for George Powell last year. We corrected that, they made us whole. That is a solid touching number, so you can see just an uptick on that, what that should be. Down a little bit, right in the middle of the page, low auction sales tax, that's the better number, it's lost. Again, we've kept that a little, a little higher. You can see our collections are pretty strong, pretty strong. But I'm going to show you in the model when we get done. Sales tax is probably one of the areas that we'll see most of the dip. Wes asked a great question just a couple of weeks ago. Hey, how does this possibly compare to 2008, 2009, when we had enough cash for the housing? And that was great.
It's a good analogy, yeah.
Great perception, because does history kill us? And I'm going to show you the model and show you what it looked like in 2008 and 9. But there's no correlation between the periods. They're different monies, what happened economically and where we are today. That's a good thing for us. The bad thing is, again, it's a lot of money. There's a lot of people wanting to buy stuff, drive-throughs, it's a 45-minute wait. People are spending money, what they're going to be spending on, we don't know. The same thing is going to apply for hotels. When it lists, people start traveling, I guarantee you people are going to be jammed in hotels because they want to get out. That's a, could be positive, it could be a negative, and I'm going to explain that as we go on. Next page. Right on the top, building permits and inspections. Again, I kept it flat, construction in all of this has not slowed down. That is a good indicator for us and probably for other cities. So I'm assuming that it's going to stay where it needs to be. And we still have to make some decisions about the inspections, the Charles Abbott law, what I brought forward. Again, because we're at a new professional day, not that we'll do anything wrong. But this isn't building inspections, this is not code enforcement, like I heard on the radio this past week. People are, just don't understand that. But we've got to watch that number because that is real money revenue coming in. I don't think it'll slip, and I'm going to be bringing that back around to you so we can discuss that. Another big one, slide right in the middle of the page, police fines and forfeitures. Slide across, right in the middle of page, $276,000. That's what was through April. Our budget was $620,000, that's a problem. You're talking about big time, big time budget, whoa. With the courts being out, with the cases slowing down, we have a lot in the pipe. And I'm hoping, and Chief and I have discussed this along with the judge, you know, is that there's a lot of money still out there waiting to be collected. I'm anticipating that number from 276 going to somewhere in the 425 range. And I think that's where we'll finish up. We still have to cover $175,000, $200,000 for shortfall. That is a, that's a pretty big dent. Again, I'm going to share with you in this model to say, what if? What if we can't put, what if happens with the criminal justice system? We're right now, we're, it is, it's not crumbling, but we have an issue because it's the easy thing to say, I can't pay. So the system is going to have to be reworked, but for us, it's a serious budget problem. Everything else pretty stable. Revenue side, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it unless there's any questions on that. All right, move to the first tab, which is counsel. This is your budget. Nothing has changed with your budget. I wanted to ask your opinion, again, this may not be the right time. But I'm thinking that, again, as we move more in the technology realm of what we do, what you do for the poll. I'm thinking the time that you spend on the telephone and with devices and iPads and teleconferences, there are costs associated with that. And I don't know if you as a body are interested in maybe putting a line on, you've been there, not as a stipend, but I think it costs you money as a left official to do business differently. That's your choice? I would, I'm recommending that, I don't have a figure for you, but I wanted to throw that out to see. We don't have to decide that today, but if you'll be thinking through that, maybe next meeting, if you want to talk it through some, fine. But you are doing things differently, and doing things differently, there are costs associated. And I think it's just out balance of what you have to do. So just, it's just something that you want to think about. More importantly, as we go through the line items in the general fund, you will see the line items for health insurance and the line items for retirement on all accounts, all line items. Those numbers have been turned inside out, they have been redone. And you can see some ups and downs, because now we have an accurate depiction of what those two accounts are costing each department. So I wanted to point that out. Right, any questions on the counsel? Management, there are really no changes to this one. Under government admin, page six. Third item is legal. And each of you know that we have been engrossed in legalities of what we're doing, how we're doing it. There is some serious costs associated. This line item is particular for Rob. So our budget of $160,000, I moved that to $175,000. Point that out, because that's, that's going to be probably on the low. Share that one with me. Everything else pretty well in check.
What's professional services tip right at the very top, the very person, what's that?
That is for, that's, is that the auditors?
Yes. Oh, okay, okay, gotcha, okay.
Yes. Next page. Just bring to your attention the public library. Slide across, committed $158,715 to that. Again, if you'll, if you'll just go with me just for a second, if there's, if there are any changes in certain. We have to, we have to put that, push that number up, that'll go to $198,000. So you can see how this budget can quickly flop side.
May I ask, should we go ahead and prepare for that in budget number 198, or we don't spend the 198?
Well, at the end of the day, you have to be prepared to raise taxes. Yeah, remember what, where I started. So I'll show you, we have a contingency in the general fund, just a general fund of $47,000. Meaning that that's how close to the wire we are. Expenses and revenues. My point is, is we start, I'm going to identify this, so I can carry you through it from the realistic term. We push these line items up on the general fund, that bottom line becomes now in red. So we make, we have to make constellations, we have to, we have to talk about cutbacks. We have to talk about how and where that money is going to. And I've, again, I have, I'll carry you through some models, I have some ideas for that. All right, finance department. Stable, we are now fully filled as far as positions. Budget itself is, is in check. I will tell you that we'll be bidding out the auditing services this particular year. The auditors, they've been in communication with Dana. And they haven't released on remote site testing yet, so hopefully a week, maybe two weeks.
Don't start, excuse me.
But we will be doing that, and we paid auditor $54,000, so that's something that we'll be bidding out. All right, next tab is IT, page nine. This is Jonathan. No changes, budget in check. And let me, let me just pause there, the departments have been doing an awesome job with their individual budgets. And I will tell you, since Dana and I, we talked in middle of March, we made the decision to not freeze, but halt spending in each department. And that, that is a crucial thing for us, because as we finish up the year, which I don't have the full picture of yet, the department heads themselves have really buckled down. And they are the ones that are going to be able to coast us through this budget year without finishing in a deficit. So I will tell you that each of them have done a superb job in managing their funds. Next tab is human resources, page 10. No changes for Emily's budget. Looking at employee appreciation, looking at physicals, we're looking at everything that has worked, things that have not worked. We're adjusting the line items that we feel could be brought down. We really were cautious, this particular document, on adding things that we really just didn't feel comfortable with or that I could not support that right now, given the current situation. Next tab is court, very stable. Budget's pretty much the same. Next item is the PD, page 12. Again, this is one of the biggest budgets. The chief has been immersed in tearing this thing apart, understanding what has been done in the past, realizing where our costs were. I will tell you right now, we have six open positions within the police department. Chief and Emily are doing excellent job on recruiting, getting people in here. Brought back in the 2009 operation. So he is doing great things, and I will tell you, there's a huge emphasis going on right now with criminal investigations, special task force, drug interdiction, traffic, and how we're doing in these hotspots within the community. I'd like to share that with you every chance I get, but we have taken some good number of guns, drugs, and cash off the street in just in the last four months. So this budget really supports that. I will also tell you that we have supported training, I don't mean the PD, part of our, realistic training, not going through the motions, but our men and women of the departments, realistic training, whether it's through TASER, whether it's through bullets, whether it's through obstacles, whether it's through schools. We are doing interesting things that make a difference within the department. And we give support that, and I'm holding out to that as much as we can, because we need to be there. He's been in communication with Adam Hathaway. Not concerned yet about the SRO contract. I read, I haven't talked to him yet, but staying with their budgets, they haven't released, if he wants to wait until he sets his. But I'm assuming that we'll get the SRO contract signed. So still continued commitment from the school. So we'll know that here as we move into June. I have not heard anything otherwise. Okay, on page 13, if you slide on the bottom, prisoners per diem. You can see we're holding at $325,000. And I will tell you, things change contrarily with this particular number. And that number per inmate is increased. That $225,000 will easily turn into $280,000.
What's an alternative that we have for that?
We realistically probably have three alternatives at this point. And they'd be very difficult alternatives, and what I mean by that, time, coordination, what we're, what we're doing with prisoners, investigations, we would have to, we'd have to account for travel. We would have to account for transport. Chief and I have talked about getting a particular software that we could actually book people in, in our facility, and turn around and they bail right out, so we don't have to take them to jail. We're talking about doing that, talking about doing that this year. So we do have three viable options, and we've already had some prices. The next step, once we learn a little more here in the next few weeks, is if we're going to have to deal with that. If we have to deal with it, then I'm going to break that to you and say, here's.
If you had to build a hold and sell, I mean, if you had to build a hold and sell ourselves, we'll pay $225,000 a year. That's going to pay for itself. Talking about maybe in 10 years or five years, maybe talking about a million dollars, if you had to put a million dollars into something. Now, they can do something ourselves, if we're going to be paying $280,000 a year, that's.
Well, again, that's, that's.
Drug tank, I mean, that's all, most of it, we've seen folks over there for any sort of crime, it's going over there, it's a state case.
Unfortunately, the laws protect the accused now, and we can't do any more temporary hold. And it's very difficult, we've talked about that. And I'm going to come up with some other options for that, because they have to be observed at all times. And now, totally on top of it all, you can't put people in the same hold as a hold. Very complicated. Matter of fact, we're hosting the Chiefs Association meeting today, it's going on right now at Senior Center. And I'm scheduled to talk to the executive board. That's where the criminal justice system is going and what the Georgia Chiefs Association is planning on doing. Because what's realistically happened right now is that the law enforcement side is losing the battle to the criminal side. We thought about it before. Right now, right now, we're getting, it's very hesitant taking people to jail. The other jails are taking people. It's the processing, it's the temperature taking, it's isolation for three days. It's, if it's not sound case, letting them go. We have a lot of work to do within that. So I asked the question, can we buy stores, containers, put some providers in there? Can we, and the chief laughed it. So it's going to take the Chiefs Association to come up with some alternatives for us, because it's going to be very problematic. But yes, let me get back to you, as soon as I know the specifics. Yes, we do have three viable, we actually have five, but two are very viable. It'll take a lot of coordination, but I'm more interested in getting software and what we need to do, fingerprint machine right here, so we could book right here, process of getting them in the system. And that's what the jails do, is let them go. That's what we need to consider.
Hey, Pete.
Yes, sir.
I've brought up a time or two, and you know, as this number gets larger and larger, I'd really like to see some numbers of what revenue we're getting versus this cost. If we don't go through municipal court, yet we go under state law or something, we don't pay anything. So we, you know, I think we've got to be smartest, when, when do we put somebody in jail on a municipal ordinance kind of thing? That's the only time we pay, right?
Right.
What is a municipal, I mean, just, I know I've asked this question many times, shoplifting?
Massage, flash betting, paying fines, traffic. So what Jack is alluding to is, is that do we really have to bring people into municipal court? And Rob and I have had some small talk on that, but it is a consideration, how we decide for that. But there needs to be a mechanism that we do have a place to take or process those, those violators. So, but you know, on the revenue side, it is, I mean, it's, it's a cost of the state courts there for state court violations. You have to examine closely municipal violations and make a determination, where we draw the line, how it can work that different.
Because if we're paying, if you go back and look at it, if we're paying 200.
You're talking about the prisoners per diem?
6.2.
Well, 6.2, we were collecting what, 272? And we paid thus far 123, is that right?
And again, in municipal court, that's, Rob gets paid for that, the judge gets paid for that, the prosecutor gets paid for that.
Bail, all these people get paid.
Paying, whether, there's a longer list. So it's, it could get, it could go off balance real quick.
So basically, our fines are coming from speeding tickets, things of that nature. I think if we can do any sort of, I don't know, I've talked more about it, I think if we do any sort of arrests, state charge or whatever.
Talk through it, we're on it, I just wish I had some more info. Contractually, where we are, and if we know where we are, we've got to make some decisions.
Does every city have a municipal court?
The small ones tend not to. There's, there's a variety of ways, but there, there mostly is a municipal court in a lot of the medium and large cities.
Okay, I mean, we just got to be sure we're not spending a whole bunch of money for.
That's right. Right. Let me just go one step further, and in the PD. Let's just say, just hypothetically, there's a change with animal control. Let's just throw that one out on the table, but there's a change that I would recommend that we would do animal control within the police department. Truck handler going out and picking up animals, cats in cages, etc., if we had to do that. That would probably be in the range of $175,000, $225,000 added to the police department. If there are changes to E911, those would be added to the police department. So you can see how quickly it would change the dynamics of the budget very quickly. Okay, so next, department. Some of the things I'll just mention, the chief has done a great job examining his budget as well. He added a salary line item for part-time. The way the chief is doing the shifts right now, he has part-time filling some. The full-timers are scheduled, and all in all, he is in a really good position. He's also just applied for a grant that allows us to add three full-time firemen and put them onto the shift. So I think that's a real good option. So that would staff him up to 9 or 10, 11, so. You know, I think, I think it's, it's good, because so he could have vacations, he could have sick, etc. But he has done an exceptional job staffing and making sure each station is ready to go. And, you know, looking back three years ago where we started, he's, he has really turned this around. So he's had a great place. You know, this grant would even enhance it, which I completely support. The training is at a new level. One of the things that I'm trying to hold on this year, he, we have to have a ladder truck. Ours is, ours is on its last leg. And we know that's, that's a considerable capital budget, so we've got to do some fancy dancing around on how we can pay for that. But again, you know, you're talking about $1.11, $1,2 million for a really big truck. Big, big decisions for us. If we could hold it, my parallel, I'd probably ask him to maybe place the order, because if we do have a brand new one, it's at least eight, eight to 10 months for bill time. So if he could place the order, maybe in January, get us through second quarter, it may relieve us if we really fall into a balance. I'm going to try to hold it.
Split that cost over to budget cycle, would you like it?
Well, if it's ordered, then I'll carry it into the next fiscal year. So this budget year, we will take it, we'll just carry it.
Funds carried forward, we go ahead and prove for us.
Which I committed to him, and he's, I know he's given that a bit on that one. It's a very important decision for us, because right now, he's laying the groundwork for the department for the next 10, 12-plus years for the ladder truck. That's the most, probably most sacred vehicle there is. You know, we're talking about bringing a four or five-story hotel, we're talking about only having a 75-foot ladder. Our capability stopped here, we need to be here. So if you could get 100 foot, so we could go to the top.
Would you issue to the after, we really need to.
That's right, so it's really, it's a sacred piece of equipment. And when you talk about a million dollars plus, it takes a lot of.
Is there any value in the.
We're going to keep, if they want to.
Well, we have, we have two ladder trucks, we're up one right now, it's the antique, it should be in the store room, showroom or something. There's no one running. The only 175 footer that we have in the station that runs and calls is 616, years old? How old is that? Almost 30 years old, what's that? Almost thirty years old, what's that?
Puts a ladder truck at the max, that's much. So we're going to sell that?
Well, well, this is another deal, you said, the market. So that's not, you know, the fire department, that's the biggest thing we have to contend. I will give the chief kudos and this was, this is a rarity until probably three months ago, but he only has one position. And he has luxury of looking at 12, 15 applications at a time because everybody is still wanting to work for the fire department. To be quite honest, the, the young folks coming out today aren't what they really used to be. And understanding what it is to be a police officer, understanding what it is to be a fireman, wanting to understand the rigor. So maybe not. So he's being real selective, but that, that in itself, nearing three years ago, they have one vacancy. He could fill that tomorrow if he wants, but he's being very selective. One vacancy in the fire department is astonishing, so he's done a super job of that. Hyman is on his way, people are starting to want to work for the Tipton PD because we're doing a lot of things right. They're starting to see that. So it's a, it's a good reflection of where we're headed. Next tab is page seventeen and that's Public Works. Again, Public Works obviously is under ESG, these are some miscellaneous costs that we have, such as electrical and landfill charges if we were picking up garbage on the street. But it really is minimal compared to what we're doing. Page eighteen. This is where you see some of the ESG costs, Public Works building maintenance, cemetery and the shop. And what we're doing, so I will tell you that ESG did submit a budget increase across the board. Jeff and I did talk about it and I had to make a hard decision to say in Public Works, in the general fund, as it impacts the streets, the riderways and Public Works itself. I could not support an ESG increase. Talked about it and I'll, I'll discuss it further with Dan if needed, but I cannot realistically do that under the circumstances.
Is there a threat of potentially losing employees or services if that is not supported? Or it's not going to, I mean, it's not going to change anything?
No, no, of all, I think for, for a company, because they look from a company's perspective, their health and their skill. They can't do races. Our budget, they're disproportionate, it's for each, each person, it's, it's the day in, day out, the money is there to support it. It's just the additional things that everything is costing more from a company's standpoint, very hard for Public Works to make that job. Just the opposite. I did support an increase in utilities and I think that's fair because they're the ones that are constantly giving us resources. They're constantly doing better engineering, they're offering different things in utilities, water, sewer, natural gas, that I support that and I kept that in this particular question. General funds side, it's just a tough, tough situation. Okay, there's no questions, we go to Senior Center, that's on page twenty. Senior Center, this is Horace Frank. She, she started jumping up and down on the tables and saying, ah, my budget's never right. So what's, what's going on? So she worked hard with Dana, this is one that was not correct for the last two years. She corrected the salary line item, corrected contract labor line item. We fixed professional services because that, Ms. Frank, it's, we have two employees and then we have Travis and Jerry who helped us set up, break down. We have cleaning folks, we have kitchen help, we have nutrition program, but all in all, right now, the senior citizen budget is fixed. So just to give you an idea, the 2020 budget all the way down at the end, 229,000 dollars, that's what it was last year. This year, 280,000 dollars, you can see we had a relatively 50,000 dollar correction within senior center budget that had to be done and now it's accurate.
So what was that again, I'm sorry? What was it, 53,000?
Look at the bottom line on for 2020 budget, 229,000.
Yeah, it says contract labor.
Yeah. That's for Jerry and our helpers that assist for everything.
So.
And the drivers that drive to deliver meals.
All that was never put in the budget, so we just have to rearrange that.
Sure.
Those contracted labor are not employed with City Justice.
That's correct.
Who are the, are they 1099 employees or?
That's where that increase is on the bottom line for the senior center, it is corrected. We did alter rent rates a little bit, so we're keeping to that. Again, we fund this, you know, we being the city, we fund a whole, a lot of. And that's, that's the senior program, but we, we fund it all. Speaking of funding it all, the next tab is Main Street. This hasn't changed much, Kirsten is in here along with.
Yeah, it's not, it's a different order in our book. Our next one is community improvement, but we can.
Yep. Sorry, community improvement, Danny John. And I'll just point out salaries, 300,000. I, I'd like to bring this back around, this would be a direct relation if we made a decision to look at outsourcing inspections that would make an impact on to that salary line item. We'll bring this around again. Jim, your consideration.
May I ask a question on that? Does this company have an engineer? Are there?
An engineer or?
Permitting.
An engineer?
Yeah, so we employ an engineer as of right now.
General, as our PD.
Right, but if we contract with this company, do they have one?
They really wouldn't need one, it's all, you know, their expertise is through certifications, building inspector, electrical inspector, plumbing inspector. So it's, it's really a industry type standard certification, so.
We need one?
Do we need one?
Yeah, would the city need one?
It really, it really, but. I'm saying, bring eighty, seven, eight.
Yeah, the question I'm saying is, is do, do we have a need for an engineer for sourcing?
Well, the engineer really doesn't have anything to do with inspections, two different.
Oh, I thought you said John's, John's salary not included?
It is. You have two inspectors that we employ, the city employs. So we have two employees that are inspectors. If we make the decision about outsourcing, we would always with certified building officials. It wouldn't have anything to do with the city. Everything else is very stable. Their department, next is urban redevelopment. Page twenty-four. Just one change about pulling out salaries, we had a bunch of amount of salaries, I moved that down to contract labor because we're just seeing contract employees still. We just made that shift. Nothing else, nothing else has changed. Main Street budget, page one five, this is Kirsten. In the budget itself. We added the part-time position, that was truly who helps us clean, no, excuse me. Yes, the cleaning is contract labor and then we have Martha who handles, helps administratively, that is part of this particular budget as well. As it says? Yes. What we did is we returned the next tab. The next tab is hotel motel. What we did is on the top on the revenue side, you can see 2% increase. 1.4 million dollars.
Where are you at on lots?
Hotel motel or other?
Yeah, under other general fund.
Dana, I think they're missing.
Oh, wait a minute, you're, you're at hotel motel tax fund? Okay, that's, it is in a different order, ours is different order. That'd be two tabs beyond. Yes, skip over confiscated assets and, and go to hotel motel, okay.
Question, good on that one? Yeah, flip, keep flipping, couple more tabs.
There you go, young tab.
Okay, so hotel motel. We have Main Street, which is stable, the submarines, what we're funding, we are doing that entirely. The hotel motel fund, if you'll notice on the top, we did add the 2%. So what comes in, 1.4 million dollars is our budget. Right below that is 240,000 dollars, that is the 1% that you committed for promotion and marketing so we could have a different line item for that. If you slide all the way down Tipton County Tourism Board, there, the amount is going up to 576,000 dollars. Still see the 240,000 dollars for the 1%. And then how we can help fund theater, we can fund some of the Main Street business out of that. So this, this will be correct July one. Wes and Jack wanted to see a separate line item, I completely concur on the 1% that you committed to that promotion and marketing for the proper reflection. But again, I think that's a smart thing because whether the, you know, the board, tourism board spends it on what? They could submit that to Dana on a part-to-part basis and then you could look at that, making sure that they're spending money. That's one of the things, you have to spend hotel motel monies by the end of the year, so we'll be able to account for that. Any questions on that? Because it's pretty easy, but very complicated. I will make sure that the new, going from 5% to 7%, we capture that, you're seeing that. Now, the next page. So. Let me help you find this one, the tourism connect.
May I ask you a quick question, Dana? On the hotel motel, for the FY budget, 1.289 for FY twenty. All right, FY twenty-twenty is 1.440, but that 240,000 is showing, and we took that, shouldn't that be 12, 1.2? Shouldn't that line item stay similar than that 240?
I don't want to upperstate by 240,000, I guess.
Well, 1% for 240,000, 1.2%.
Okay.
So the two, the 1% of actual tourism and the 1% which is the 240.
I couldn't remember if we had, so that would be up from one, six, eight, when we looked at it. I remember if I had before that additional line item.
Yeah, and you're, when, when the nickels fall out, you're out of the correct, but if you slide down to 576, it is 1% is going to the board, 1% is going to the.
Got it.
Tourism economic development is, we did this because it's smart. Instead of having Abby, because we pay her salary, we put her salary line item in this tourism economic development line item, the 60,000 dollar plus for all of her expenses in this particular fund. So we could easily track that, we get reimbursed by the DVA for it, so this is something new that we've done. All right, so if you go to the tab that says T-SLOSS. T-SLOSS, yeah, my T-SLOSS is the new bank tax. Again, we have, the city has 1.9 million dollars of just discretionary monies over 10-year period, we so far collected, I want to give you a snapshot of where we are. So we have 360,000 dollars that we have collected. So this is coming on next year, we start talking about paving. I'm going to offer this pool of money to you that if you want to do some roads or some other sidewalks or some other projects, this is, this will be your outlet. Add some more money to the project, which is great, great thing, but I'm a little scared to let it now because of the monies in there. So if we can let it accumulate just a little more, we'll be ready to go. The next page is T-SLOSS. We are, I'm very comfortable, Dana has worked extremely hard reconciling T-SLOSS four, five and six now. So I'm going to be, on July one, we have to give T-SLOSS four monies spent. That's a good thing for, for y'all. We have, we have a million dollars, just over a million dollars of T-SLOSS four money ready to go. So we are going to be some aggressive, replacing some water lines, sewer lines and some, some more paving, that would be my recommendation. But this is on top of the LMA, on top of some other things. So 2020 may be turned into a good year after all, regardless of the project. T-SLOSS five, still healthy, we're continuing that, monitoring, cleaning up some of the projects that are left off. T-SLOSS six, collections are starting to show very good signs. So between the three, in this year with collections and T-SLOSS, you could have a really good snapshot of project management and how much we could press on getting some things done within the city, city regarding roads. Okay, if y'all are ready, if you go to water, water tab. I, it's no mystery, I'm a secret where we are with water and sewer. It's no mystery and secret where we are with water and sewer. So realistically, I kept, I kept the numbers of collections very, very flat. With, you know, some drier weather, I think it's, it'd be really, real easy to make sure our revenues are stable. We mirrored 2020 budget. Giving some discretionary money in there for maintenance repairs of the system, like the generators. We got backstall, generator went out, wells, we've had some money in water area discretionary money for maintenance. We paid for the generators at the well, so that will never happen to us again. So again, it's a good, good thing to have with regards to just internal things that we can fix and that we could present in the way of improvements. Overall, I talked about an increase in water. Until we have more knowledge. As I said on page 5, there is a small increase for ESG on the water side. Questions on that? Sewer. And sewer is flat. We are. Sewer's not a moneymaker. We are hopefully going to get this GFO improvement grant at the plant. We have to do some upgrades. Before we do that, there's a new line item I want to share with you on page 7. It's called leachate surfaces. Right now, we're budgeting $75,000. This is where leachate, that word leachate is, it's called just a dirty water that comes out of plants that you can't get rid of anywhere unless you have the capacity or you have the right combination at your treatment plant itself to take it and mix it into the FFO. So it's not hazardous. For a wastewater plant, that is. But what we have done through ESG, they've been able to bring us leachate from outside, put into our plant, blend it into what we have going on. But it's turned into a very small revenue line item for us. That's a good thing for the plant. So if we can make money with simple things like this, if we can continue on with the operations, maybe that will grow. I want to share that because that is a new item that we are trying. Or again, everything is pretty, pretty flat. On page 10 to 25, ESG, there is an increase to their budget. Questions, the next is gas.
I got a question. I said, so ESG wastewater waste fee, is that what they charged us that year?
That's right. Natural gas, it is, it is sales angle. Hopefully, we have a whole winter. Roger, they're doing a great job, we've added some new customers, which is good. But it all depends on the market volatility of what it's possible to, what petroleum, how this affects the natural gas industry. We are holding on, not being aggressive whatsoever on the natural gas side. That could turn, we could have a good load come in, bump up the revenues, be a great business venture for us. If not, remain flat, hold on for some cool weather, December, January. Next, a big one is the solid waste plant. Some of the things you'll see is the increase in fees, under fees itself. This is all, anything happening at the landfill, whatever, oil, other than paying. Et cetera. This is part of that budget is very, very similar to last year. We don't expect any changes. Page 20, 25 is the landfill. Just point out salary line items, salary line item changed Ricky's salary for. I didn't agree with this last year, but there was another fund, Ricky's salary was put in the solid waste fund. We took it out of the solid waste fund and put it in the landfill. So we just moved it to a different fuck where it should be. Engineering fees, we'll need some engineering fees depending on our plans this year. Composting, I could tell you, we've increased $150,000 to chip all our material. Again, I will submit to you that number one, the landfill is very costly. It is very technical. It takes the right equipment to do it. You put yard trash on top of that, it becomes a very complicated process. We've entertained the idea of burning yard trash to a burner this year. Costs about $225,000 to get that thing in here. We have about $50,000 in engineering fees just to make sure the state says it's okay. But again, I will submit to you that the landfill, we have to make decisions about the landfill. If we have to do with the county, it's almost time to do that. We have to make sure our tipping fees for our residents are secure. We have to make sure that we have alternatives instead of what, how we'll bury the garbage. And that includes the yard trash. So we have to make arrangements, do it differently with cost measures, the considerations. So 2020, I really have to work hard on that. I know Jack and Wes want to examine what would it cost the city to pick up yard trash? Jump material. So again, all this is intertwined, but big money, very big investments, and not an easy process at all. But I will tell you that if we don't take the right steps and we don't make the right decisions, it would be very, very detrimental for our users, for our property. So that's, I'm going to see this, I'm going to see this come around every person. Theater fund, nothing to report there. We are in discussions with AVAC. You know, we did, it's our second year, third year if we continue by AVAC. You know, this show too, some of the shows, we're examining revenue when it comes to the theater. So we're going to take this up in the next month, discuss what's best for the city of Tipton. How we're doing that, because we do pay, pay them a lot of money to put on some shows. There hasn't been many shows, so we've got to really get that close to. Customer service fund, there's nothing, nothing changing in that. That is downstairs, very flat budget, nothing to report in the way of changes. If we can go through capital, I don't think it's really necessary. You can post it on expenditures, but it would be my intention to hold off on that just as long as we can to make sure we are doing what we need to. Okay, two things. I want to talk about our health insurance. And we're happy. Health insurance, right now, we are, we are $130,000 to the food from what we were last year. Great insurance. All in for what city employees pay, what city pays, it's going to be $1.4 million. But I don't anticipate an increase in health insurance, that's what we want. I think the funds. That's retirement. So that's, that's a great number. I'm really excited. Our boys have been doing what we've been asking of. And our coverage has dropped, it's excellent. We've taken on a number of new employees onto the plan. So we are doing things right with regards to health insurance. On the retirement side, we should have our actual report for costs hopefully in the next week, week and a half. Since our budget meetings, Wes and Jack, we've asked for that number, they're just about done with it. They committed that to me. But to give you an idea, our retirement is very strong. We're at 80, almost 80% collections where we are as far as being funded. And the retirement fund is healthy right now. You will have that opportunity to address that in regards to budget considerations if we need to talk about that. But for next year, we are fully funded and the budget is locked in. If nothing changes, retirement is covered for this year at a very, very good, solid area. If things loosen up and our revenues collect, I know it's your desire to put more monies towards retirement and we'll do that one payment if, when the time permits. So retirement, health insurance, excellent shape, and I'm real proud to share that because that's usually nothing. Okay, so a lot of information. If there's any questions on the department side or the revenue side, I can answer that. I want to run you through, oh, here. I want to go back to health insurance, and I know this means nothing to you. But health insurance, when you talk about costs and actuaries, they go about ratios. What is your ratio, loss ratio? Heard that term before. When I took over, again, this has nothing to do with me. Our loss ratio was 170%. A medical. 170%, meaning that our costs and what we're putting in were way off. That was scary. And again, by making smart decisions, bringing options to you. Three years ago, we did the right things. We're constantly training the employees, don't go to the ER. Make sure you're taking your meds, have the health fairs that we're having have worked. The fairs for the, for smart diets, things that we've been doing with the employee relations committee are working. To this year, 2019, ending in 2019, our loss ratio is 71.69%.
Wow.
There you go.
It's really.
So do we get a break in there?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask, you know, I'm going to ask that because what was comfortable to a lot of organizations in the past? Well, fuel is going up, so we're going to add a fuel surcharge to your bill. Now restaurants are saying, hey, I got the coronavirus charge to your bill. Fuel right now is at a all-time low. Do you think we get a break? Do you get, if you buy fuel at all, or our garbage company? You think they give us break in the fuel? No. When you talk about this type of monies, I'm going to, now look at what we did, look at what I could prove to you. Do we give a discount? Because I think it's, I think that's appropriate. But man, when you, when us as organizations move ratios like that by smart stuff, by monthly things, by education, what, from a human resource standpoint, employees are listening, the families are listening, and we're still gaining employees on our plan. So that's, it's, it's just a great thing. That's one of those proud things. Now, this could wipe out, and we could have, unfortunately, the way that health, if someone could have, you have three employees in our tax. That, those numbers could get blown up a water by three, three claims. But I'll take it when we can. That's, that's important. Okay, so what balance? I'm going to, I'm going to run you through a couple scenarios to what if, because we know it's not going to be what it was. Do we know exactly what that means? No, I haven't the slides, I think, I think March went down 6%. We should have numbers, the sales tax in a week. We should have some hotel, hotel numbers in a couple weeks. That'll probably be a really good indicator of where we are. So let's start by going through the what ifs. I told you Wes and Jack, they asked me to run through a scenario. This is just something for you to look at. That's back 2008, 9, 10, what the monies were, where it went during the big crisis. And again, I told you that right now, there really isn't much of a correlation between what happened in '08, '09 and what happened to them. Doesn't, nothing there to support. I will tell you where it is going to stick up pretty good. Is those items that I told you about. With regards to property tax, local option sales tax, monies, or fitters. If we start losing, if we start losing ground with those type of revenues, I'm going to be coming to you to say, Mayor Council, we have to make cuts. And I'm pretty confident that's what I'm going to be coming to you and saying. And I've got to be able to share with you, what does that mean to you? It's not an easy, you know, I'm going to say, but we need to raise taxes, 1.5 mil. That, that's the easy thing to do. That's, that's last resort. I haven't done that in my entire career yet. So I would say there's options that are vital, and I've given you a snapshot. And if you'll take a look at this. I'm going to say, Mayor Council, look, on this budget, if all the departments, I'm going to say all the departments, you have to, you've got to give me 2%. You've got to give me 2%. We've got to have a budget cut of 2%. And if you look at that, that's $282,476. That's what that equals. To us, it's, you know, 2% to, you know, some of the departments is pretty stout. Dana calculated what that amount would be. If I say, Mayor Council, that is not enough. The departments have to give us 4%. That would be $564,952 we have to cut out of the general fund of the entire budget. This is where we start getting a little scary. If you remember, we talked about this, 1 mil in the city of Tipton is about $350,000. So 1 mil, $350,000. So you could kind of do the quick math on what that would mean in the way of mil. If the tires fall off. And I say, Mayor Council, this is serious, serious. New day, we got 6%, $847,000. So again. So again, it's, it's starting to, you know, the realization that I could, where we could cover this for a little while. I could coast on, we can make adjustments, but if it gets into this area, then our organization will look different. I will present you a plan to say, here's how we re, we need to reorganize. You need to make a decision between service A and service B. What would you rather do? Here's where you go, say, well, we don't want to make any cuts or raise taxes. That's, that will happen. You'll have that discussion. Again, there's no easy way around it. It just is what it is. Dana has done something remarkable and I haven't ever seen this before, this big sheet. This is actually a model and again, we didn't create this. GMA did this because they knew what was on the horizon. What Dana did is plug in all our numbers. I want you to go to this, put all pages, look at scenario one, you'll see the yellow. This model in Excel, I, Dana had to change any of the numbers on this. If we see trends coming, we could change the numbers and I can tell you what the impact is going to be. It's a fascinating tool. We've never had before. So scenario one, we went through, this, I think we're going to be pretty close. If you slide by, just go in the middle page, you'll see pink columns, right? Property taxes under scenario one, I dipped it 2%. I'm going to say, we, we may take a 2% dip in property taxes. Scenario two is 4%. And scenario three is 6%. I mean, I'm going to show you how this would work. So if you slide down the middle of the page, local option, sales tax, which is lost, same page showing right here, first page. I said, well, look, we're going to dip 3% on sales tax. Scenario one, scenario two says 5%, scenario three would be a 7%. And what this does, it goes through and it recalculates the entire budget as to what it would mean for us and how we can look at this. And realistically, you know, by the time we get numbers next week, by the time Hotel Hotel comes in, we're going to be pretty, I think we're going to be pretty darn close. So what this means, scenario one, that scenario, if you turn to the last page, scenario one said this, that if all of this happens, I get about $543,000. Go back to this, this sheet. You know, I gave you. $543,000, I got to get a 4%. And again, it quickly says that, that says, Pete, you're, you're in the middle. This is going to be some tough decisions. This module is really a great tool, the great thing, and again, I think you understand it. If you look at our history and the graphs on 2008, 2009, 2010, it doesn't show much of a blip in Tifton, Georgia. I'm hoping, I'm going to say this, I'm hoping coronavirus is not going to have a big dip in Tifton, Georgia with regard to our number. Property tax, sales tax, we're going to see some downward trends, but we're still seeing some upticks in a lot of the areas. If that happens, we'll be able to keep it on even. But all in all, by next month, by the time you approve this budget, I'm going to have you, I'm going to have you some numbers because this document will change. I will have you a page with option one, option two, and option three with my recommendations to say, this is how we have to do it. And hopefully we're going to talk about option four, which is, you know, taxes. So on the municipal government side, we are not immune. Tifton County will be walloped just like we will. And I don't know if they're doing projections or not. I don't know what, what happens with us. We could pretty know, pretty well by design. I can, I'm going to be able to show you where it's going based off of our number. So that concludes my report. Jack and Wes also asked Dana and I to look at, we have to do some work on the direct cost allocation. This is for the service funds. We have done that. We're going to get that out to them so they can take a peek at it. It won't change what we talked about today at all. It's just an internal mechanism that we use for calculation purposes on utilities. So we're, we're looking at it, looking at it completely different. Again, what makes perfect sense so we could logically say where the income from it now. Here, it's just big pages, scenario one, two, three, general fund reductions. I'm chasing the quote.
Well, I'll tell you this, this is probably the most comprehensive, understandable presentation from a budget standpoint that I've seen since I've been on council. We've never had this kind of detail and this level of what if scenarios that I can work. It was just, here's number one to do this we can, you know, to some extent. So being able to say, I mean, you know, hopefully we won't have a situation where, you know, the, the wheels fall off. But understanding and being able to comprehend if we do, this is how we respond. Where you begin to see real numbers and impacts on specific department, that's, that's pretty strong. That's, that's really helpful. So this is really good. So I appreciate everybody that's worked for me.
What Jack and I was talking about, I wanted to take a look at the past is, is because when we were first talking about this, this was probably what maybe a week or two into coronavirus pandemic or whatnot. So, you know, from news reports and conversations within the financial world, banks were prepared, prepared themselves for something similar to 2008, 2009. You know, and what transpired after that, that recession. And I think it was a government, the government acted a little bit, a little bit more quicker than they did back then. And, you know, we didn't have all that information at that time. So, you know, we wanted to look at, say, if this does, which we probably won't be able to see the true impact of what this has done. Probably to December.
Right. And maybe farther out. I mean, it just, yeah.
So, you know, if you look at these numbers from, you have some months in 2009 and 2010, that, you know, you collected 195,000 dollars. Taking a look at that, and that's a December, that's the sales tax in December, that's Christmas.
Yeah, that's right.
Looking like what we did last year in December, we did 247,000 dollars. Yeah, 247,500. So I think taking 50,000 a month off of that, that's substantial figures. That's, that's kind of what I was wanting to, hey, we need to scale back now, go ahead, prepare. I'd much rather, it was Jack's opinion was to make sure that we kept our employees employed versus spending money on something and then us coming back one day, let's let you go.
Well, and I think that's what's going on in cities across Georgia, you know, all the, or, you know, with Georgia Municipal Association and having the opportunity to talk to other elected officials in other communities. Everybody's, you know, sort of of that mindset, no, no, no big expenditures, no special projects, no, we're just going to hold off because it's taking care of the people that are here, making sure. Yeah, that's, that's sort of the mindset through the state. So I think that we're right.
On the budget, I know we had talked. Trust me, when I say this, we truly care and appreciate everything from every employee. There's no races in here, so. I'm looking around to keep people employed, give a raise and then say, okay, we got it together. We have to cut it, you know?
Right. Cut all these people to give more, yeah.
You know, I mean, I think big ones standing out is just, and then maybe next year, if this isn't as bad as we anticipated. And we're able to, everybody's able to get back and do the swing of things and per se, you know what, next year.
I, I think in, in today, in the employee, if they don't think that the city is a great place to work, that's stable it's been through this type of scenario, that they really are confused. That's number one. Number two, if we go into the 4% mark and I kind of hit $564,000, there'll be cuts. There'll be, there'll be personal cuts. That's the only way we're going to get. But again, I think to your, to your point, we have done, man, I'm telling you, you guys have supported us 1,000%. We're not able to do this without making crazy suggestions or adjustments or tax increase or fees this. We've been steady as, as, as a rock and we're going to deal with it. And I think that the history shows, hopefully blip's not that bad and we could, we could hold the line. But I, I can't take, Dana Chancey, she has, she is really good at what she does. She's very versed in this stuff, but what she came into, what she endured and what she produced, she really has done fine job for all. Thank you, Dana, for doing that. It means incredible amount to all of us. Thanks.
Well, I guess a testament to you too, Pete, I mean Dana as well. Now you're preparing. If you're not saying, going ahead, you're giving us the information and saying, hey, listen, guys, you may have to make a difficult decision. You're going ahead and preparing us. And that is what I like because I would hate to be like, hey, everything's fantastic. And then four months later come to me, you're telling me you've got a cut.
You've got a balance, but that's the thing. I will tell you, I asked Dana to just do a little summary to, I'm going to have everyone involved in this one. But city of Tifton, it is a proud moment where I can say that we're fully reconciled.
Well, you're here. That's, that's, that's fantastic.
That is, that is accurate, with accurate, accurate state.
Are we going to hear some bad news and not all that comes through?
Not that. Dana asked an audit for a rebate because we've done all the work.
Well, I mean, at the end of the day, we did. I mean, that's true.
We'll talk about the.
So anyway, thank you for just hanging in there with us. You know, most cities, again, I'm going to, I'm going to keep saying this from the employee standpoint, we've done great things, solid as rock, providing, providing, encouraging, etc. Project wise, you guys put out almost $4 million worth of work last year. And you just don't see this and Mayor is involved in a lot of GM. You, you asked somebody at the city, I'm telling you, they, they are low crawls right now. So at the select officials, you, you, I think just, I, I think it's like to say, we'll probably book the same or more in projects this year, giving them flexibility in the field to replace, redo, enhance infrastructure and paving etc. for residents. That, you just don't see it anymore. I'm proud of the staff and how they're handling that. So it's just that it's, we're ready, but it's, it's really a good, good time for, for the good part. And any, any questions, man? I mean, I've said this is, that's a huge download here, so. If there's questions afterwards, we have to approve this. June, we have a public hearing, so we have a few weeks.
Does the school system have to have theirs approved during the same time of?
Well, they, he's asked for an extension. They won't, they'll do a soft approval. Again, you know what I would recommend? I'll say this, I'll say this, I'm going to. I don't know what the state is giving 16%.
I don't either.
I say, give me, you and Jack, the state's budget, let us take a whack at it. Because what it does is it sends you into panic. The schools, Lord have mercy, that's bad enough. They're going to get a lot of care money. City of Tifton, we're not, you know, you as elected officials, us, you're not getting a dime. And you, you're producing this results for the residents. We're not getting a dime. So they have a soft budget, they'll provide an extension. That's what I'm saying, both we need SROs or they need those because it's going to be in the budget. But until the state, until they get their force in hand of some decisions now, they're going to be well, I don't know.
June, or do you think it would be advantageous, maybe we'll reach out to Chairman Jones and find out if he can somewhat give us an idea of whether or not they're going to do anything with SROs, starting with $180,000. We're going to have to pick up somewhere.
Chief is on it.
He's working on it.
Chief is on it. I'll follow up with him if we're getting a little, I'm not sure.
I will say, because I'm sure they won't give them.
Things in the budget got it. And the school can't abandon a line item like SROs for the safety of the children. It's not, it's not a place to cut budget. So 16%, man. Look at, just 6%, 16%? Come on. Come on. I say, get, get it to you and Jack and let us take a whack at it. Yeah, obviously. That's crazy.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hey, can, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we can.
I just, I just wanted to chime in, you know, follow with what Wes said as far as you went, Dana and Pete. Pete, you know, you're, you're the boss. A great job. But Dana, with this reconciliation and all of that, I mean, you know, we had numerous conversations and there were some tough conversations. I, you know, Dana didn't like me a time or two after I left the office, I don't think, because it was, it was serious business. And for Dana, for you to be able to put together what you put together in the midst of all that was going on, unbelievable. And so I, I really appreciate it because I, I know what's involved and I've, I've done it for years and years. And, and it's, it's just a Herculean task and I really appreciate it, so.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Jack. It means a lot for me.
I'm not sure how to take that, but I'll take it positively.
Well, that's, that's all I have. You know, stay tuned. I'll have some updates for you next week. And we're ready to present this, give a public hearing. And so far, right now, you have a balance button.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
With no tax increases, no rates in utility rates at all. Anywhere we can say it.
Look at that camera right there, Wes, and say that one more time because this is the video that will be put out on the website.
I heard you.
We need to get a paper.